Alrighty, it looks like we are all here now. So I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's good to see everyone. And we'll start with a roll call of the committee members and I'll do just like we typically do where I will call off a name and you can just announce yourself. Chelsea Parker, myself is. Kyron?
Kyron comes here.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are here.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley here.
Nick?
Nick Meyer here.
Nick, you're really hard to hear. I don't know if.
Nick Meyer here.
Perfect. Susan?
Susan Dominican here.
Excellent. And Alex, I just want to make sure you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay. I should have checked that first, but. You gotta make sure before we get way into the meeting and you're like, what's going on? So, okay, excellent. I'll go ahead and read the school verse today. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. Um. Are there any audience members here to address the committee? Being none, we will go down to 1.5. Are there any agenda modifications? No? Alrighty, that takes us to 1.6, the minutes from November 12th. Um, sorry, November 10th. So I, it's. We'll entertain a motion whenever anybody is ready.
I make them either for approving the notes correct from or from the last meeting, right?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the meetings or the minutes from our last meeting, which was. I don't remember the date of that one. It was October, November?
November 10th.
November 10th.
Great. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second Frankie's motion to approve the minutes from November 10.
Great. Thanks Kyron. Then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Frankie?
Aye.
Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Excellent. Great. That takes us into the financial reports. Jim? Take it away.
All right. All right, we have the financial update for November. Overall, pretty similar to what we've been discussing, strong financial position given the circumstances. Surplus forecast, 34,000. Buffered by some of the additional funding that was received this year related to the budget changes in the pandemic. And so we continue to recommend reserving those sources that are eligible, roll into next year, reserve them for next year. Where we anticipate a shortfall in the budget. Revenues really right at budget, 2,000 variance right now. Expenses currently operating, you know, a pretty good number below budget, about 39,000. Cash into the month, steady 624,000, although after November is when we anticipate some declines in cash. As we know, we're still waiting more info on deferrals. So we're operating at the previous estimates for the deferrals. At this meeting, we have the first interim report, which is the summary of the financials, really October updates summarized into the state format. And then the LCFF budget overview for parents is also presented at the same meeting as the first interim. Tendons and ADA notes. No changes to ADA this year. We're funded at 293.37. So that's going to continue, but you can see where in 2021, that hold is very favorable for our finances this year. Revenues, really no current changes. You know, there was a little adjustment in the state's calculation of the federal revenue and then a little favorability right now in some of the local revenue. So it's basically at budget. LCFF shouldn't move this year. So we have a 2,000. The big sources, the learning loss, the 153,000 in what we call CRF was to be utilized by December. And it looks like we're right on target. We already have 120,000 identified more charges on the way. It just haven't come through the system yet. So we should be right on time to have that fully spent by the end of the month. And then there's the secondary 23,000 to use by the end of June should be no problem. And then the other sources, 80,000 where we would recommend rolling that forward to next year. Expenses overall favorability at this time. Staffing in the environment has been lower than initially anticipated, although that will start to pick up second half of the year. And then. Additional services and equipment funded through the grants, but overall favorability right now, 38,000. And that's continuing to show higher compensation expense in the second half of the forecast. So it's not just taking the low cost in the first half and assuming that it's assuming a more robust expense and giving credit for the first five months of the year and then anticipating more. So this, we should feel pretty confident in being able to maintain at about this level. Brings us to the surplus, surplus current forecast, 134,000. Like I said, about 80,000 of that at least, we'd like to roll forward. Fund balance is currently about 666,000, about 19%, 68 days expenses. Cash, of course, because of deferrals will be significantly lower than that. So due to the timing of funding receivable, you can see in the cash chart, the sudden decline in December, where the quarterlies won't be received at the end of December, we'll get bumped into January. So your December receipts are lower than other months. And then after January, we enter the deferral cycle with cash decline. The positive on this is that the forecast continues to show about $200,000 at the end of June. That's right around the level where we're unsure, you know, if that's enough cash to get through the next month. But it is enough to think that we might be able to, just with careful cash management, not need to borrow. So if we were, if we were in the range of 100,000, unless we knew there was a check arriving the next day, we'd be having to have the conversation about additional cash, cash flow. But there's, you know, continued optimism that Blue Oak might be able to get through this deferral cycle and the start of next year with no borrowing. But we'll continue to follow that. And based on this, if there were any, it would be, you know, short term, two months, not mandatory to take on significant interest cost borrowing the whole deferral cycle. Key compliance items, as I mentioned, this is the, this meeting and then the full board meeting is the approval of the first interim report and then the LCFF budget overview for parents. And then in December and January, we have a significant data reporting. And then, as I said, in the revenue section, TRF funding report will be completed in January. Jump to the balance sheet. Are there any questions about the November financial update?
All right. Thanks so much, Jim. It doesn't sound like there's any questions. Great. So that covers 2.1. And since the audit is so different, let's go ahead and. Entertain a motion to accept the financial reports and recommend presenting to the board before we get into the audit.
I'll make a motion to accept the November financial report to be reviewed by the board.
Thanks Kyron. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Is that Frankie?
Yes.
Thanks Frankie. All right, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
And Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
And Chelsea Parker, aye. Excellent. All right. So then that takes us into the audit.
Just, just to confirm, does acceptance of the financial reports include acceptance of the interim and the parent budget?
Ah.
Which, in the sense, ultimate approval is the full board. So I don't think it's mandatory to show that the finance committee vote on them. But I just wanted to make sure it is important that they go to the full board and that the board approve them.
So what you're referring to, Jim, is the fact that we need a specified item on the agenda next week for each of these that show that the board intentionally approved them. As what we're doing here, which is reviewing and so it's, that's not critical. But I'll leave it to Chelsea to think through that.
No, and I appreciate that, Jim. I didn't realize I. Quickly glanced at the list and I didn't realize we hadn't actually gone through all of the items in section two. And so it looks like we're only, and I think that was because the actual to budget summary was at the bottom of the list. So I missed that. So it looks like we haven't reviewed the first interim report. Or the LCFF budget overview for parents. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So then let's. Now Susan, how does that work since we already voted? Can we still amend it?
You can amend it.
Okay.
You can just do another motion, but whatever you need to do.
Perfect. So if it pleases my fellow committee members, we will keep that vote or that motion with the exception of 2.16 and 2.17. We will just make a motion on those separately. So let me just make sure everybody's okay with that. I am Kyron.
Okay, was it?
Hey Frankie?
Sounds good.
Yep.
Are you waiting for me?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh. Great. And Nick, I heard you say, yeah. Susan?
I'm good.
Great. So and then Alex, did you get that? We're pulling 2.16 and 2.17 from the vote and we'll vote on those separate. Yes, maybe?
I couldn't find my unmute button, so I gave you a thumbs up.
Oh, and I, and I didn't see you on my screen. So I was like, did we lose Alex? Okay, perfect. Great. All right, Jim, go ahead and take us into the first interim report.
And the first interim. Is the presentation of the October forecast, both the actuals and then the forecast, which they refer to as the first interim budget. If you weren't doing this monthly, these would be the key check-in points, first center, first interim and second interim. And so fortunately, we cover this every month. So there's no big variances we have to account for. But you could see if we weren't, the change from adopted budget to October is very significant. But the finance committee and the full board have been updating this information, managing, you know, the operations of the organization throughout the year. And so this is to recommend to the board who will approve, to submit to the authorizer and ultimately the state, the reporting of both the actuals through October and the forecast for 2021. Showing kind of like we just discussed in November, that the school does have a solid financial plan. They have made changes since budget to adjust for changes in the environment and still have, you know, a solid financial plan for the rest of the year.
Does anybody have any questions on the first interim? I don't see any. Okay, great. Jim, anything that. We expect Chico Unified to be displeased with?
No. I mean, as discussed, I think, I think. It's been favorable this year. I think that's the biggest challenge right now is ADA relative to fixed costs. And the organization has adapted and is utilizing the specialized funding that is available this year. And so I think the interim is very favorable. And then the future year, all schools are in this discomfort, looking to 21, 22 and 22, 23, where we're not to, we're not to increase revenue, but we know that creates a lot of instability and potential deficits, but we're not really bound by that yet. So there's always, I think we had this with the approval of the first budget where we're saying the current year is solid. We were projecting 21, 22 and 22, 23 with great deal of uncertainty. So don't take those so seriously. Deficit, we will address that. So I think that's, that's the only area, but that's also standard throughout the state right now.
Sure, sure. And that didn't seem to be a problem when we submitted our first budget. So I would anticipate they would give us the same or hold, hold us to the same expectations for the out years. And yes, like you had mentioned earlier, we are looking at this each month. And so it, it has looked really, really good. I'm, I'm so thankful with how far we've come financially as a school. All right, um. So if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion for 2.1.6. And that is the recommending approval of the first interim budget report.
I'll make that motion. I move that we approve the first interim budget report for, for our review, for review and approval for the board.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Great, Nick. Thank you. And then I will call for the vote. Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
And Chelsea Parker, aye. Excellent. So then that's 2.1.7, the LCFF budget overview.
So typically, the budget overview is included as part of the LCAP. The LCAP being very significant, they proposed the budget overview to provide a like three-page summary. So that'd be easier to pick up and identify the funding and the expense sources that are identified in the LCAP. This year with no LCAP, there was no budget overview. And then they added the learning continuity plan, obviously much smaller in scope than the LCAP, but added back the requirement to have a budget overview adopted at the same time as the first interim and kind of tied it to the learning continuity plan. So the big variance between this budget overview and last year, last year included the full LCAP, lot more expenses disclosed there. This year only related to the learning continuity plan, which had very limited scope of expenses. So it opens with the reporting of your projected revenue for the year that would agree to the first interim report you just saw, which is the October update. And so it does a good job of breaking down, if you weren't looking at this regularly and you wanted to get an idea of how funding worked, you could see that the LCFF accounts for, you know, a lion's share, 2 point, almost 2.7 million. And then from that, they're trying to show they want information on supplemental concentration. So they could break that down and show that of that 2.7, only 278, maybe only 278 is supplemental in concentration. And then added this year, they call out the federal cares funds, not the state component, but that the federal cares funds were 233,000. In a full LCAP, this 200 plus. 2 million, 2.7 million would be related to a lot more expenses. But here, when we developed the learning continuity plan. We weren't discussing the whole budget for the year. That was never the intention. So the learning continuity plan counted for about $300,000, which is very similar to the amount of money that is awarded in supplemental and concentration component. And specific to Blue Oak's learning continuity plan, all the areas identified were considered targeted towards high need students. So that's the next question is, what did you budget? And what did you budget for high need students? So we show learning continuity 297, the amounts that were considered benefiting them 297. And it compares that to your $3.5 million budget. And so now we have $3.5 million budget and only $300,000 in expenses identified. We just explained that, well, that's because that was a learning continuity plan, not a complete budget for the year. The most significant charges for any school are staff salaries and benefits and facility. And those aren't necessary to include in a specialized plan, even in the LCAP, but especially in the learning continuity plan. So they just wanted to check in to explain why do we have this variance of $3 million? Well, the, the standard operating expenses were not included in the plan. And the third component is. Here it is. Because there wasn't an LCAP update in June, they're now asking for a 1920 LCAP update. So back in 1920, when the LCAP was passed, it budgeted 271, 272,000 in expenses for high need students. And it wants to check in on how did that go? Well, because of the way the year ended. And there wasn't an LCAP check-in. Our estimate basically is that all those identified areas were spent as targeted. We didn't get too much detail on whether it was slightly over. It was best just to report it as, yes, everything that was identified was spent. And so we're reporting that it's not currently mandatory, that law may change, or maybe the application of the regulation may change in the near future. But at this time, when a school receives the supplemental in concentration, they need to track it, but it's not returnable if they don't utilize it. Although that said, it is best to utilize it and report that. And so overview, our parent budget overview shows the total funding, how it ties to learning continuity plan and a check-in on the 1920 LCAP.
Um, Susan, can I ask this $271,000 budgeted for high need students, does that paraprofessionals, intervention services? Equipment? I'm, I'm just. Wondering where that money goes exactly. And I hope that's appropriate for me to ask that right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I have that right off the top of my head though, Kyron. Um, does that, it doesn't show that in your report, Jim?
I just, I just dropped share so I can look some stuff up. But it's, it's. Outside the scope of the Title I program, although they can overlap. And so usually, obviously you'd have intervention would be an area, but that's covered through Title I. So it was the additional identified for supplemental concentration. And let me see, also keep it in mind, it was all the way back in 1920.
Yeah. Um, I know that a big portion of it is for specialties, Karen. I'm, remember with the LCAP, we're talking about how we're meeting the whole child. So I believe that's a significant portion of it.
Okay, yeah. We had specialties, we had mentoring. Social work. And then we did have, I think we had components of. Supplemental supports that were beyond the Title I funding.
And that could possibly, maybe, I know we have more aids this year because of distance learning needs. Would that be some of it too, maybe?
So this is actually last year's.
Okay.
Right, Jim? So it's the 1920. So next year, when we look at it, likely it will be. Increase in aids will show us, will show there.
All right. Thank you.
Great question, Kyron. Jim was at the end of it.
Yes. So if there aren't any other questions, I'll, I'll stop with the LCFF budget overview for parents.
Did anybody else have any questions? All right. Then we are ready for a motion.
I make a motion to approve. The LCFF budget for parents to be, to be approved by the charter board.
Great. Thanks Frankie. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second that. Maggie?
Thank you, Maggie. And I will call for the vote. I'll start. Chelsea Parker, aye. Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
And Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
Excellent. And that takes us to the audit.
Chelsea, could I just say something real quick?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to thank Jim. So Jim, I, we don't really, I don't know if we've ever in person met, but I, this is like my seventh year being on the finance committee, I think. And we've never had a finance person who presents it in such a clear way. And so, and thank you, Susan, for working with him and all that. But I just really, really appreciate it because I don't understand money stuff too, too well. So I really appreciate the way you've been laying it out. And so thank you.
I believe that's why. I believe that's why we chose. What is charter impact? Because it was clear, concise and straight to the point.
So Nick, none of us have met Jim in person yet. We haven't had that opportunity. So when COVID is gone, he will come at least a couple of times a year up to Chico so we can talk to him face to face. But in the meantime, here we are.
Yeah, I visit, I visited right before the lockdown. Cause I was, I was terrified at the time, like, oh my gosh, if I'm a carrier, I just exposed the whole state. Back in February. I shouldn't say that now, but.
Well, you, no, I think it's safe to say that now because we're not a carrier.
But I was, I had, there was, there was a tense couple of weeks waiting to see.
Yeah. All right. So Susan, will you be presenting the audit or Jim?
I, I can present the audit.
Great.
Alex, can you put it up? So.
Can everyone see that?
Yep. So annually, we contract for an outside agency to review our financial positions and our, all of our processes and so forth. And so they have completed that. And it's ready for the, for you to review and for the board to approve. I tried to get it out to you earlier so you could take a look. This, so let's go ahead and scroll down. If we can. So this goes over what an audit is. Keep going. And who's, what the responsibilities are. Keep going. Our financial position, which he should be familiar with from Jim's reports. Continue. 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 This is all our expenses, our annual, all of our annual costs. And then our significant accounts and policies and estimates and so on. Continue. Continue. This is all basically saying that what we're doing, and that we're doing everything just fine. So. Notes on our financial. Statements, our retirement process, and what we do for that. Continue, so it's. Assets. That's. Our board membership. Instructional minutes. This year was interesting, obvious instructional minutes because of COVID. They actually had to do some additional work on that because they didn't get direction until they were in the middle of the audit. So there's, so if it looks different, there's, there are reasons for that. Continue. Okay. And it stays in draft form until the board approves it. So that's why it still shows as draft. Okay. So any particular questions on the, the main thing for me is always to see if we have any exceptions, and we don't. So that's always good. And that they reviewed all our information and that we were fine. It was different this year in their language, and it took me when they first wrote up our contract, I talked to them about it, then some of the language has changed as far as auditors, audits going. So they say a lot of times we're basically not guaranteeing that everything is perfect at the school, but this is what we saw. And that's sort of that, and that is repeated number of times. And that, that's my understanding is simply a change in the audit process or the expectations from the state. So doesn't reflect on us at all, so specifically.
And Susan, we've used the same company for the last few years. Are we due to switch auditors or because there's multiple auditors within that company, we're still good? I mean, I know this year we're fine, but I mean.
We're still fine because they changed their head auditing staff from year to year. So there's different auditors doing it, and I would say I can definitely tell you there's different. There's a difference between the auditing. But it's up to us if we would like to go out and see, and it might be time to go out and see if we would like to change auditors, this would be a good time to start that process. I believe we have to have that decision made by March, mid-March. So definitely if the board and the finance committee would like us to do that. And we have been with them now since 1718, I believe. So. Yeah, so that's three years with this firm.
Thank you, Susan. And for those of you who don't know, it's, it is best practice to ensure that you rotate your auditors so that you don't end up with complacency or.
Too close to relationships.
Yeah, I, I was trying to say that without, without being too, yes. And any issues like that. So that's why it's always good just to make sure, but it sounds like we are in fact changing auditors, even though we're still working with the same company, so.
And I, yeah, and I definitely feel like, and I think Maggie would support this, that they definitely look at different things, you know. They look at everything they're supposed to, but go deep into certain areas every year and then adjust a little bit. So feeling like they are, they're not like saying, oh, just turn in the same five things every year. It's, you know, the requests are different. And so I feel like they're doing a deep dive for us to make sure we're doing things right.
Just kidding, I was talking on mute, so you couldn't hear me. Thank you for that, Susan. And for anybody else, are there any questions on the audit? I know for me, when I receive it, the very first page I go to is the findings page, and I was surprised, not surprised, I was pleased to again, another year in a row with no findings. So that is, that is very good news. And then I, then I proceed to read the rest of it. So I was glad to see that. All right, well, if there are no questions, then I am ready for a motion.
So a motion to have the Charter Council review the audit? Is that what I'm motioning for? Or to accept it?
Typically, it would be, you know, we, we review it, and then we give a recommendation to the board as to whether or not we think that they should accept it.
Okay, so I make a motion to recommend that the Charter Council accept the audit.
Great, thank you, Kyrin. You've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Great, thank you, Frankie. All right, then I will call for the vote. Susan?
Susan DeBeninghini, aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Frankie?
Aye.
Kyrin?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, we are trucking right along. That takes us into item three. Susan, you want to take it away?
Sure, and this is information that I apologize just got to you today to be able to look at. We are addressing needs for changes in the pay scale. Number one is because of the California minimum wage that goes up in January. So the important thing to make a decision for recommendation either this month, or if we do it next month, it would also be fine. If you have more questions, but the minimum wage does go up in January to $14 an hour. And if you look at our current salary schedule, it starts at $13 an hour. That's because that was the last minimum wage last year. So what I am recommending is that we eliminate the first, the current classified schedule, the first line of, of it, which starts with 13. The only employees that have been on that have been the have been the yard duty. So we would be eliminating the possibility of hiring somebody just to do yard duty, and they would then be either on the same pay scale as the instructional aides and paraprofessionals at this point. So reasons for that, number one, we, the, we found we often had aides that also did yard duty, so we were splitting that. We didn't see a lot of savings there by having a few hours on yard duty. And it complicated a lot of the scheduling. So to bring that up to the same pay scale, so that we can take instructional aides, assign them to yard duty as part of their functions, we will need to update job descriptions for that. The other piece is, so that's two reasons. Number one, the cost change is minimal. Number two, the flexibility. And number three, when we look at the job duties between instructional aides and yard duty, one of our biggest issues is often behavior related, and the need to make sure we are covering and honoring tho- that need and training at a higher level seemed to make sense. So, so I am proposing that we eliminate the first line. That means the beginning of line three would have to start at $14 an hour. And I've given you two options. One is that we simply make column one and two at 14 and leave the rest the same. That would not cost us any money whatsoever. If we, the other option is to restart the salary schedule at column one, line three, and go throughout the pay scale, so that everyone would get a minimum of 35 cents raise and up to the top potentially a dollar fifty-two per hour. That is, as I mentioned in the cover notes, that my very rough estimate is a cost of between $5 and $6,000 for the remainder of the year of the junior. We will then also at some point have to address the fact that pay scales will go up again in January of 2022 to $15 an hour. Raising this to $15 an hour at this point would cost us over $50,000. So I am not recommending that until we have an opportunity, $50,000 for a one year. So, so that would be 25,000 for the remainder of this year, and then 50,000 starting in June and moving forward. So at this point, I'm not recommending that until we have an opportunity to go through the full budget process. So these are the two options. Both of them eliminate the first two, and then we have two options that I'm providing to change three. I mean, you can also make a, knowing that it's about a $5,000 cost, you can also make a recommendation to increase, increase that more than, to start at more than 15, $14 an hour, but not less. So that's my.
Thank you, Susan. I had a question. So option three, is that the $50,000? Or if we started that in January, that would be the $50,000?
If we started, let me, so I haven't put that option up here. That would be the option that starts at $15 an hour at step three. And so that would be an option where over a year, the full cost, it wouldn't be the remainder of this year. But for a full 10-month school year, it would be about a $50,000 increase. And that is totally an estimate, me just doing some quick calculations based on the number of students, based on the number of employees we have, hours. I have not gone through staff, member by staff, member to see what the exact cost would be. So that's an estimate. So that, that would mean that if we were to up this now, it would be an increase in costs between January and June of about 25,000. And then it would be 50,000 the following year.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Um, I have another question. So if we did the option three part type thing, I, I agree. If option three is something we would do, would we have to include that in the budget that we create for June? Or, and then the, if we didn't include it as a change in August, will we have to redo the budget come January, or to come December when it changes in January?
So if you're talking about if we raise it to $15 an hour, yeah, we would have to include that in our decisions in March as far as preparing the, the budget for next year.
Kyrin, it looks like you maybe had something.
I was just looking at the classification portion and seeing some of the missing numbers. I assume we just don't have any employees that would be on that level on, of the pay scale.
Right, the pay skill is, it's set up as just the full you know, possibilities. So if we were to decide, for example, that we wanted to increase the, oh, a special presenter, then we would have the pay scale set up to move them down. And it's just pretty much standard practice that I've seen in education is to have this kind of of scale where you're showing what they would be, even though you don't have employees in there.
I think, I think Susan Kyrin was referring to the fact that like, we don't, in our classification, there is no five, yet we have a five on the scale. Same thing with eight and nine, 12 through 16, that sort of thing. And my understanding when this was created, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was just that that simply we have kind of a scaled pay scale that includes lines that we may not be utilizing currently. But if we were to add positions, there would, you know, then the decision would just be made which line to place them on the pay scale. Is that correct, Susan?
That's correct.
Well, the only other issue I see is if we remove that first line. And, and that's not really much of a raise for current instructional aids. It's like a 30 cent raise or something. So they might feel like, you know, they're not getting that minimum wage. Also, I have school counselors who make so much money. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
And so my, Mike, is there anybody else that had questions or comments? So one of, one of the things that I wanted to just chime in on with option one, although from a financial standpoint, it sounds really great because that doesn't have an impact now. I really kind of the same thing we, we dealt with when we faced this with the, with the teachers and, you know, it, it not being a long time solution, a long-term solution, was when we had to just bump the bottom levels of the credentialed salary schedule just to make that minimum wage. And essentially, then anybody above that got that much closer to minimum wage. And I know that at that time when we made that decision, it was because we had to. But if, if we do choose option one, then I would like I would like then to do like we did for the other pay scale, and as soon as we're able to then kind of adjust that throughout. So for me personally, because it's such a nominal cost to go with option two, which it eliminates that first line, brings that step one range three, it, it's an increase of about 35 cents, so that just then trickles through the pay scale, essentially bumping that 35 cents an hour. Because by just increasing the one, it moves everybody 35 cents closer to minimum wage, I guess is what I'm saying there. And so I, I like option two. I, I wish we were in a better, you know, I wish, I wish that schools were better funded so that we could move to $15 an hour at the beginning of the school year. But I feel like at, is an additional $25,000, I feel like in a year, that's really already an unknown. I have concerns about about that. Obviously, we have, we're going to have to move to that minimum wage. But I would feel better entertaining that when we have a better idea of what our financial position will be. So for me, my thought is option two. And also for my fellow council members, since we did just receive this, and we are just talking about this, and it is not an immediate action item, if we. If we decide we'd like to not vote on it until the next meeting. If you need some more time to think about it or review the numbers, please, please feel free to, to comment and, and we can do that as well.
Is there like a option two point five that we could potentially like do option two? And then, because I'm thinking of us having to budget for this in March and how much if we don't have some sort of like, like gradual, like, okay, we're going to do an increase now, an increase now, an increase now. And it's a gradual thing, how much of a adjustment it will be come, come next January, especially since we have so many unknowns. Like if we are like, okay, so we're going to raise it. Yeah, we're going to do option two in January. And then we're going to do like a two-point-five option where it's like not quite fifteen, but we're raising it some so that when it comes January and we're still maybe in an unknown spot, we're not like, our budget isn't just like shocked by a twenty-five thousand dollar increase.
So I, I kind of see where you're coming from there. But one thing to be mindful of when we do set the budget and we will discuss it in March and we'll set the budget. But the budget runs from June through July. So, so regardless of when during the school year we make those adjustments, they will all be included in that budget. And making increases earlier will actually be a larger expense than, than making them later. So that's, that's just something to be mindful of. Although it'll, our monthly expenses will have a larger jump by doing it all in one month. Our overall expenditures will be less if we can delay it some. If that makes sense.
No, totally. Anyone else thoughts?
I'm with you, Chelsea. I support option two. For all the reasons that you stated.
Uh, is, is anybody ready or comfortable with voting on this tonight? Or would you like some more time to review it and bring it back at the next meeting? Anybody? Okay, well, I'm not hearing from anybody, so I guess I'll put it out there. If somebody is interested in voting on this tonight, make a motion.
I like support option two. I'm with you guys on the option two. I think option two is our best option out of the three. So I'm like, if we're going to vote on it, even if I'd be comfortable with that one. So.
So I will, because I probably know it better than everybody else. I will agree to option two. And I would like to propose the motion that we recommend to the board accepting option two. And with the caveat that we need to review this for two thousand twenty-two and that will be part of our budgeting process in the spring.
So I guess what makes me hesitant to vote on something now is, I'm just wondering if a salary scale like this for classified, is this kind of in line with what Chico Unified would do? Or I just worry about the idea of positions being placed on different lines without any reason to them. Does that make any sense?
So Kyron, when we established this back in two thousand nineteen, it was done with a survey of like jobs in the community. So when the different counselor, for example, since you mentioned that, that was checked at that time to the community. I don't, I have not gone through and rechecked that. I think we are definitely, as far as teachers aides, we are below the Chico Unified salary schedule because they have been increasing also. When I have looked overall, you know, we're all addressing the minimum wage. So everybody's increasing things a little bit. But I haven't gone through and re-certified the salary schedule to say that we still are in line with other districts. I have not done this on this particular time. And in March I can do that, but I can't, I don't think that I'll have the time in this short range to really do that well.
So Kyron, are you referring to, I don't know if Susan addressed what you were referring to or if you're referring to the lines on the salary schedule that don't have jobs associated with them? That if we created positions, then we would identify where on the salary schedule they would fall?
No, I was really asking about like the different positions that pay what? Like, how do we judge which position plays, pays what? And do we make sure that anyone we hire under that position would meet the same qualifications? Whether it be education or training that they would at another school? And I know that's a lot to answer, but that, that is my one, you know, gray area that I'm seeing.
Well, I can attest to what Susan said about when we did create this. It was actually a fairly long process. And comparisons were done to identify the salary schedule as we see it. And then, you know, so, so at that time, the, the dollar amounts were comparable with the classifications for those positions. And, and I feel like making the decision to increase the entire salary schedule because of a minimum wage increase, I think is really kind of a discretionary thing. And I would expect that likely other, other industries that are, or other businesses that are able to would reflect that through the, the schedule versus just bumping up the bottom tier and, and not throughout. I, I have confidence that our administrative team and our hiring teams would thoroughly vet any applicants and ensure that they have the appropriate certifications, but I'm sure Susan can, can attest to that.
Yeah, we, we do do that as far as our, we compare expectations between our schools and others through our edjoin and other things. We have not had yet, and this is something that's on my list of things to do, a certification process for aides. We do verify their abilities, but we don't actually, we have not implemented the paraprofessional certifications that many other schools do. They were required under the past federal funding and are not required now. So it's something that Rachel and I have been talking about what that would mean. However, our salary schedule also reflects that that is not an expectation.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to make this into a long thing really, but you know, I, I just think of the worst case scenarios. I think of like, you know, maybe someone hires someone that they know that, that's their friend and they're not really qualified to do something, but then they're just like bumped up to higher on the scale. Like you're a professional now, you know?
Yeah, we have a pretty well-established hiring process. And, and also the now with, which is pretty much the standard that is used in most schools and government agencies with a team who does that. There's no hiring done one-on-one with anyone. And so, yeah, that's really not, not happening now.
Thank you for answering all my questions. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Kyron.
Oh, thank you for asking. I think it's extremely important, especially as we are making recommendations to the board in this committee. That if you do have a question about a process or how something was done because you weren't part of the committee when it happened, I think it's absolutely necessary to ask those questions. So thank you, Kyron.
I'm not sure if I'm seeing the right one, but if the one I'm looking at, it says for the instructional aid, it has fourteen dollars for year one and year two. Is that because like, since it's the minimum wage is going to go up next year anyway, there, that is going to go up to fifteen? Or am I looking at the wrong spreadsheet?
You're, you're looking at the wrong one. We need the one that starts with three being fourteen and then goes to, yeah, that's the one we need.
Because I can't see that like at all. Okay, great. Okay. All right, awesome. Thank you.
I think, I think the other one was up because it actually had the options listed. So just, just something to be mindful of as we're, we do have a motion on the table. We do not have a second yet, but that motion was for option two, which is the, the schedule that you see on your screen now. And then in addition, an increase for minimum wage for twenty-twenty-two calendar year that would address the increase to fifteen dollars an hour at that time.
And would be addressed during our budget process this spring.
And again, sorry if this was already, so when the budget, when the minimum wage shift happens, and, and we talked about it, like when that happened with the teachers, it wasn't a raising all ships kind of thing. So is a raising all ships kind of thing built into this of like, you know, for the paraprofessionals, who, if they stay on for next year, would they also get, you know, a commiserate bump? Or is it like if they're, would they, you know what I'm saying? So like if the brand new people are coming in at fifteen, are the people who've been here for years also going to be just at that rate?
This is your, for January of two thousand twenty-one, so next month, this would be a raising all ships. This, this too. So everybody would get a minimum of thirty-five cents an hour raise and a maximum, I think it's like a dollar fifty at the top of it.
Here's the original Nick, if you wanted to compare. This was the original I had up earlier.
I just know in terms of morale, it's a huge, you know, bummer. It's like, what? I've been working here and trying to help. And so, so I'm glad that that's built in. Awesome.
So that, so it's built in, so everybody will get, it would start at three, one would start at fourteen and then the calculations run through it all the way through to the bottom corner, nineteen-twenty, that bottom corner. So, yeah. So this one does, and then again, when we look at what we're going to do for next year, that would be appropriate to bring that question up again, Nick.
All right. Yes, because Susan, just for clarification, that option two doesn't include how the rest of the salary schedule will fall out when that fifteen dollar increase is made, correct? The option two is just establishing that it would not happen until January?
I have not presented to you anything at fifteen dollars an hour. If you want to request that of me and not vote on it at this time, that's fine. I just know in my very, 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 very estimated numbers, what I shared with you about the increase in cost for the full salary at fifteen dollars an hour, that would, so again, if you would like me to do that one now, I could definitely do it. If that's what you're requesting, but no, this is just at fourteen with the caveat that we know that we need to look at it again when we do budget.
Right, okay. So this is, because that option, I know it said the fifteen dollars an hour at the January twenty-twenty-two date. So it's kind of just, we're saying now that we won't be making further adjustments to the salaries or the, yeah, the hourly schedule until that January. So for us, that means we'll be discussing it in March.
Right.
Correct. Okay. No, and I don't, I don't think that I need to see twenty-twenty-two pay scale before we do budget discussions in March. I think March is the appropriate time to have those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
If the committee agrees. All right. And so we do still have the motion on the table that just as a reminder, it was the option two, which is like the term Nick used, I really liked, was the raising all ships and removing the first line, that line two of the salary schedule for the reasons that Susan presented. And then we would not be doing the additional twenty-twenty-two minimum wage increase until we are required to in that January of twenty-twenty-two. And so with that motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I would like to second it.
Great, thank you, Nick. So we have a motion and a second. I will call for the vote if there's no other questions or comments. All right, seeing none. Susan?
Susan Dibinigini, I.
Nick?
Meyer, I.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, I.
Frankie?
Frankie Boizer, I.
Kyron Combs, I.
And Chelsea, I. Great. All right, that takes us into three point, no, three point one, the other pay scales.
Yeah, so, um, so what I would like to address, the other thing I would like to ask you to address is that our facilities manager is not currently at minimum wage for the white collar level. And I would like to bring him up to that. Let's see. Do you have that? Can you go on? Let's see, where did I, did I not put that here? Okay, if you could move to the next page, please, Alex. So we've addressed the classified pay scale, the administrative costs. I was asking for the facilities managers to be brought up to at least the minimum wage for white collar. And then have proposed to address both the certificated salaries, discussed the other thing. So that, that's the other thing I would like to ask you to vote on is to approve an increase in his pay. And then with the caveat, I guess, that I can say that we need a administrative salary schedule. We do not have one. And so I'll be bringing that to you in the future, but I just didn't have time to get a good, solid background on that before I brought it to you today.
And I appreciate that. I would rather see one done thoroughly than done quickly. So it looks like from your notes here that the two thousand twenty-one cost, so are you requesting that this be, that we recommend this increase beginning in two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year? Or beginning in the two thousand twenty-one calendar year?
Two thousand twenty-one calendar, calendar year, so beginning January two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. And it shows here that the cost in two thousand twenty-one would be sixteen hundred, so that covers the first, the first half of the calendar year next year. So I, that's, I would, based on our current numbers, the increase to next year would then be thirty-two hundred. Although there's some increase built in already, so that's not exact, but. Okay, anybody have questions, comments, concerns? Or a motion?
I make a motion to, I make a motion to recommend an increase in the facility manager's position monthly pay to the board.
I second.
All right, so we have Frankie with a motion and Maggie with a second. And Susan, um, is that a salaried position or is that an hourly position?
It's a salaried position.
Okay. Just making sure. I thought so. Just making sure. I thought so. So there's, I've got Frankie with the motion, Maggie with the second. And does anybody have any questions or comments? I will then call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Karin?
Karen Combs, aye.
Frankie?
Frankie Boiser, aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
And Susan?
Susan Dominican, aye.
And then Susan, I will, I expect that we then would have the management pay scale to see prior to. Going into budget discussions in the spring?
Yes.
Excellent.
So and then Chelsea, I just had the additional notes that I added. These are just things that I wanted to make sure people were aware of as we move forward. First, we talked about the classified minimum wage, starting it, you know, the $15 an hour starting in January. So we've talked about that. And we also had, will it be required to have an increase in the certificated salary schedule? To cover in, in January 2022? That would be between a, what did I say? At $4,000 a year to a $7,000 a year increase per student. So per teacher, excuse me. So an awareness of that as we move into budget. And then the importance, as we've already spec, discussed, to propose a, an administrative salary schedule. So those are just notes, information for you to ponder on as we move forward.
Thank you for bringing that now, and I think it's, it's good to keep it in the forefront. And yeah, I think there's a lot, a lot of changes and a lot of discussions to be had around the budget for next year. So I would definitely ask that we start that process as, as early as we have the information to do so. Because I have a feeling it's going to take a couple of meetings.
I would think so.
All right. Thank you for that. Did anybody have any questions on the certificated salary schedule comments here? Okay, great. Thank you. So that takes us, then covers 3.1, it looks like. So that takes us to 3.2, the facility grant program award notice. That is a long name for this.
Yeah, and this is really just, I'll start and then if you get real detail, I'll let Jim talk. But this is really, I feel like last year they started actually sending us this. Before that, it was sort of a mystery. And so I, I like to share it. This talks about what our cost is or of, of our lease are overall, and it's all reimbursable. And then if you'll move down just a little bit, Alex, so they can see how it is. Is considered. So our full cost is the 50, 568,000. What is reimbursable would be up to 75%. Our ADA award basis is what we're actually paid on, and they show you the calculation. So we receive the 354,000 number. And then, then it talks about how it's apportioned. So just so you know, that that's where the SB 740 money, how it comes in and how it's calculated. I think that it's important that you see that and acknowledge that. So our current low, there was a time when the 75% was covered. At a higher level because our ADA was higher. And as our ADA goes down, then the amount that's available for rent and facilities also goes down.
And it's too bad our rent doesn't fluctuate with our ADA fluctuations.
Yeah, that'd be nice. It's not gonna happen. So, and again, there's no, this is just for your information. There's no need to approve it. And to just have an opportunity with Jim here to answer any questions that he, here I can answer for you.
So I just had one question, not specifically on the form, but just on the timing of this award. Because I think somewhere in here it said like six to eight weeks or something from receipt of this. Is that in line where with when we would normally receive this money in a typical year? Or are we receiving this later than usual?
I'll let Jim answer that question.
Sure, it's, it's close to in line. But the trend has been, even without the pandemic, that it's slower every year.
Sure.
And the final payment for last year still hasn't been received. So see how you have broken out 50%, 25, 25, right? So we're starting to look at that last 25 is like, is this a two-year? You know, how long does it take to get this money? If we can get the 50% in January, we'll feel really good. Because that's really where we, we start to make our model much more conservative. Because it's a, as you can see, that's pretty close to your projected ending cash. So it's critical that that arrive.
Right. And that's kind of where I was going with that question. I guess my next question then was going to be, do we expect the, the other remaining two payments to then come in? On a typical schedule for cash flow purposes? But it sounds like that's a little bit of a moot point because even on a regular year, they maybe, or maybe don't come in on time. So, okay. Wow, but that's good. At least this wasn't deferred because it is, like you said, Jim, a, a large, large chunk. So at least we got something coming. All right. Well, thank you, Susan. Does anybody else have any questions on how this is calculated or how this, how this works? All right. Great. Then that takes us to 3.3, the donation approval.
So this is just anytime we have a donation over $500, it needs to be approved by the board. So it's coming to you first for that approval. Your acceptance.
Great. And that's really great that we were able to get that, that grant again. Because I believe that's the same grant that Amber has applied for, maybe for one or two years prior to this. So that's, that's pretty awesome. All right. Well, would anybody like to make an emotion to accept some money?
I will make a motion to accept this generous donation from the Donahue family.
Great. Would you also like to accept the $1,000?
Yes.
From the M and D Foundation?
From the Pierces for the general funds. Yes.
Great. So we've got, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks Frankie. All right, then I will call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Karin?
Karen Combs, aye.
Frankie?
Frankie Boiser, aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
And Susan? Susan, can you vote off mute, please?
My dog is here, so I was trying to preserve your, I.
Thank you. No worries. That then takes us into the executive director's report.
I will make this as quick as possible, nothing that you need to approve, just to let you know that we're still moving forward. With the marketing enrollment and fundraising projects. I spoke to a local firm last week. We had a really good discussion about messaging and what they could do for us. And they promised to have me a strategy, the costs out by the middle of this week. So hopefully by your next meeting, we'll be able to have that comparison also. It definitely a different take from the other two agencies. The other two are really pretty focused on how we're using the web, which is one of the big issues we have. But they were also wanting to work with us on developing our message, which is something we have talked about for, well, the four years I've been here. As to how to get the message about what we do across in a way that's attractive and understandable. So it definitely, we're looking at using that firm at this point, but I don't know what the costs are. And again, part of my process here is to make sure that everyone's aware of what the potential costs would be for this. And also the potential upside of increasing our enrollment as well. So can you roll down a little further, Alex, to the next page? Additionally, I am continuing to work on a full day kindergarten. I met with a kindergarten team and Sheila. Sheila, of course, was the, the last, the third kindergarten teacher a few years ago. She also ran the kinder care after-school program for Blue Oak when they were doing it themselves. My understanding from that team is that the main reason that they canceled it is that they were having trouble collecting funds. They were not charging parents until after the service was, and they were struggling with that. So that's, it was a financial reason so for that. And the other thing on that is I reached out to a friend of mine that's in the preschool world. And runs the preschool programs for Glen County and talked to her about what the potentials are. She's also a big supporter of Waldorf. And so she's helping me kind of figure out what we could do and how we can do that. So continuing to move forward on that. And then I met with another broker about possible facilities for our move. And that we're looking at in 18 months. We'll just put it that way. So don't want to say too much on that because we start getting into negotiation issues. But just to let you know that we are, we're out there thinking about it.
That's great, Susan. And so with that timeline of the 18 months, when, when do you think we will start seeing those negotiations? On the closed session for our meetings?
I, I can't give you that at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not today.
Not today.
Sounds good. Any questions for Susan on her report? All right. Well, folks, that's it. And we don't meet again until next year, according to my agenda. And I guess that's right because it's December, so I will see you guys next year. That sounds so weird.